All right, good evening, everybody here and at home. This is the, we're calling to order the Monday, November 13th, 2023, meeting of the Lunenburg Planning Board. This meeting is being recorded on Zoom. It's on Zoom and it's being recorded for our later distribution on YouTube, et cetera. If you want to join us, we are here at Town Hall. And if you have any questions, you can always log into Zoom either on your computer or with the phone number provided on the agenda, or you can drive down here and join us, and we welcome your smiling face. And we will open with public comment. And just keep your eye, oh, you have the waiting room open too, to see. Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Seeing none. First on our agenda is the decision for 274 Prospect Street, but is that, is that filling out and finishing the agenda, or is the, or the, the decision?
Yes.
Or, we would usually do A and Rs first, and I think if that's going to be super, well, Richard's here, let's hit that quickly then.
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
Absolutely.
What's that?
No rush.
Okay, cool. Thank you. All right, so we have the decision for 274 Prospect Street.
Yes.
And that one was, oh, that's the one that needed, that we brought up at the special meeting for us.
Yes.
Needed some edits. All right.
And I know Richard had finished the, he made all of the edits that was discussed.
Yes.
I just want to make sure that.
And so, we don't need to do, add anything for time or anything on this, do we? Is it all set?
All set.
Okay. Great, then, we have the decision that was brought up at the special meeting we had, where we tried to address it. There are errors, now they've been fixed. That should be in our drive, but also here is a hard copy. I will not be signing this because I wasn't here for that meeting. So, now, do we need to vote on the decision now, or is it just a matter of signing at this point?
I believe.
It looks like we need.
You need to vote.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, does anyone need to further review this decision? And yes is fine, if that's the case, we can take a moment.
It should be in the drive.
Yep. All right. In that case, I would be looking for a motion regarding the stormwater permit with the board's standard and special conditions. Do we have extra special conditions listed on this?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay. So, I'd be looking for a motion to approve the stormwater permit with the board's standard conditions for, for 274 Prospect Street.
So moved.
Second, sorry.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, oh, nope, sorry. I will abstain.
Shall we sign it now, or wait?
We can't, that one still needs to have the date added, I think.
Okay.
But, all right.
Yeah.
Perfect. Okay, we can sign this, or can't? Because it's got the date. The date is still.
Oh, okay, yep.
Yeah, so we have to add the moved and seconded.
No problem. I'll take care of it.
Okay.
Tomorrow, I'll be in my office.
All right. Excellent. From there, we'll go on, we have two A and Rs tonight, and the first one would be for 20 Buttonwood Place.
Thank you, everybody. Greg Roy with Dillison Roy. Appreciate your time this evening. I'm representing the applicant, Mr. Bersh. And actually, the property is both 18, affects 18 and 20 Buttonwood.
Okay.
Just a real brief history here. The lot in question is shaded here in the tan, that's the existing lot as it exists today. It's approximately .71 acres, non-conforming with respect to area and frontage. Frontage is derived off of West Street, as you can see the neck that exists there. About a year ago, Mark contacted us and was looking to do something with that piece of property. He'd like to put a new house on the property, kind of an agent place, place for him and his wife as they, as they, as they get older. And so, we, we did a couple of things at that time. We embarked on trying to find a replacement septic system for the, for the new structure, as well as a replacement septic area for the existing house at 20 Buttonwood, which is right here, 18 Buttonwood, 20 Buttonwood. And so, when we were doing our soil testing, the area in green that I have highlighted on the plan here, which is currently part of 20 Buttonwood, the larger piece of land, that was the area where we found suitable soils to construct a new septic system for the 18 Buttonwood property. So, we, we proposed at that time to create what we're calling Parcel B, and deed it to, to the 18 Buttonwood property for the purposes of constructing a replacement septic system. When we were doing the surveying for the property, it was discovered that the existing lot line, which is on the upper edge of the red shaded line, which you can see is right along the edge of the existing structure at 20 Buttonwood, that structure was actually slightly over the lot line. Not, not only was it not complying with zoning, it was actually slightly over the lot line. So, we, we realized that there was an opportunity to correct that issue as we were going, going in for this process. With an A and R plan to annex 18 Buttonwood with some additional land, we're actually going to give some land back to 20 Buttonwood, so that we can correct the zoning issue that exists there today. So, effectively, in summary, we're proposing tonight, the plan that, that you're reviewing tonight, takes the green area, we'll annex it to the peach area, and we'll take the red area and annex it to the remaining white area, which is known as Lot 2. Because we were giving up the red area, we were going to be more non-compliant with respect to zoning relative to lot width for the existing structure on 18 Buttonwood, as well as any proposed structure. So, we, we again hit the pause button and went to the Zoning Board of Appeals to obtain a special permit for dimensional variation relative to lot width, which was granted and has been recorded, and that reference is listed on the A and R plan, which basically allows us to reduce the lot width to, which will allow us to deed that red trapezoid to 20, so the lot width will be.
Wait a minute. Exactly, right there. She was there, now it's here. That was the.
So, that was a long-winded history lesson, but really, we're here tonight to request endorsement of the plan that creates two parcels. Parcel B would be deeded to Lot 1, Parcel A would be deeded to Lot 2. Effectively, we're not changing the area of, excuse me, the frontage of either lot, but we are increasing and making the area of Lot 1 conforming, where it is currently not conforming, and we are not changing the, the current conformity of Lot 2 relative to area. So, that's it. Happy to take any questions.
And just, just for the sake of thoroughness, they did go to the Board of Health and got feedback from the Board of Health, and are aware.
We did.
Oh, great.
Matter of fact, we have a, a new septic area, as I mentioned, on Lot 1, and we've been, the reason why we didn't come before you a lot sooner is because we've been trying to find an area for Lot 2. Board of Health, of course, requires, Title V requires a division of aggregation of facility, we have to be, have a compliant system, septic system. We have now found soil testing sufficient for that on Lot 2, which is why we're now before your board. And I believe the Board of Health has signed off on that, if I'm not mistaken.
Great. And that's as much for, I mean, you know that we don't, that that is for the benefit of the owners to make sure that everything is together, we're not predicating our decision based on it.
Understood, yeah, understood.
Great. All right, any questions for Mr. Roy? Seeing none, I would look for a motion.
What do we do with?
To endorse or not endorse the A and R.
A motion to endorse the A and R for, what's this, 18 and 20 Buttonwood Place.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded.
Point of order, the A and R is for, is it listed as 18 and 20, or is it listed as 20?
20.
Okay.
It's 20, that's fine. 20 is fine.
Rich.
20 is, it's listed as 20.
The motion and the second.
Is, Mr. Harris, is the motion and second as listed fine, or should we restate?
Oh.
You were muted to us.
There, okay. I'm unmuted now, right?
Yep, you're good.
Issue reference 20.
Okay.
Since it's on the agenda, and it's clear that what you're on the subject is anyway.
All right.
All right, motion to endorse A and R for 20 Buttonwood Place.
Second.
Good. Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do you want the Mylar?
Do you want the Mylar tonight?
I do have it.
We can take a moment inside as we're going down.
I have the one.
Yeah, if we have a Sharpie.
Come your way.
A Sharpie would be less helpful, but funny. All right, we also have an A and R tonight for 318 Howard Street. I need to move this because I keep knocking over my laptop on my laptop.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board members. My name is Kevin O'Brien. I am the owner of the house at 318 Howard Street. In putting a new septic system in, in the front yard, front left corner of that property, we measured back to the well in the backyard and realized we were more than 100 feet away. Only problem is that we're not more than 50 feet away from the property line with the well. So, we're looking to move the back line to 51 feet, which is what the plan shows.
All right. Thank you, I'm going to call this up and look at it on mine as well. I'm just going to pass this down for some quick signatures as people are available and ready.
I don't have a problem with that, I'd like mine to go through the front.
I thought.
Mine's a little small, although, I like.
And I, I apologize for my own edification and complete lack of, apparently, ability to hold on to simple thoughts while talking. Could you give me the dime store explanation one more time?
When we reinstalled the septic system, we installed, if we could put a new septic system in, it's in the front left corner of the house, of the property. Measuring from the septic system to the well is well over the 100 feet, which is required. But in looking at it when we were doing the Azrael plan, we realized that the well is only 20 feet, if that, I believe, from the, from the property line. So, we're moving the property line back 51 feet to meet the setback of 50 feet.
All right.
From the well to a property line.
And there's no change in frontage, correct? Is that correct?
No change in frontage, there's no change in structures, there's no change in, in ownership, yet.
And, and again, not, not that the result affects our answer, but you did get feedback from the Board of Health on this as well.
Board of Health has given a letter, I believe, and he might have that in her file. I saw a copy of it, so.
Yep.
And, and they knew I was doing it because they're doing the septic system with me, so.
Yep, and again, it's, the answer to that doesn't affect our, whether or not we endorse the A and R, because that's not part of the law, but we do it to make sure that, there's been too many instances where people get surprised.
Close the gap.
And mess their, mess up their future plans.
Agreed.
Great, all right. Any, any questions?
None.
Nope.
I will comment for, for future reference, and it looks like this is well above the threshold, but we do have a stipulation in our bylaws that limits the amount of the required frontage that's encumbered by easements. Now, I just say that because I noticed there's three easements at the frontage, and, and I don't recall the percentage, but I'm sure that this is well in, in, not affected by that. But I just wanted to mention that for Board members.
Fair. All right. Well, with no other questions or comments, I would look for a motion regarding the A and R for 318 Howard Street.
Motion to endorse A and R for 318 Howard Street.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Very good. That is, that is unanimous, all set, let's get that signed for you, sir.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
Could we, thank you, ask for the Sharpie back.
That's something I pick up, next day, whatever, and then I report it, is that the way you typically do it?
Typically. Or you can take it with you.
You can take it with you, now.
I'll sit and wait.
Yes.
Thank you.
Just make sure the date's on there. Oh, perfect.
Yep.
Just double checking.
All right, this is everybody on Flat Hill, okay. Now, just give us the one moment to finish that up, so we don't have the extra Mylar rustling as we go forward. Thank you.
Sign them all, the end.
Yeah, yeah, because those are, yeah. So, don't let us leave without signing.
I won't.
Hope you all enjoy the holidays.
Thank you, you as well.
Thank you, Kevin.
Great, that is all of our A and Rs for tonight, 18 minutes in, and we're cruising. Next up are public hearings. This, we have three public hearings scheduled for tonight, but we will see that there's going to be some requests for continuance, so this will be shorter, but we can start with 360 Flat Hill Road.
The Lunenburg Planning.
Oh, no, we're not going to read that yet.
We're not going to read that?
No, because we are likely not going to open this public hearing.
Oh, just kidding.
Because there, there is, I was emailed today with Mr. Patno, the applicant, and there was an issue with the Butters being notified. So, we cannot, we cannot open the public hearing tonight. Is Mr. Patno present? I don't, I, I see we have one person in Zoom. If they are related to this public hearing, they could raise their hand or let us know in some way. Okay, so, no, so, this was going to be a public hearing for tonight, there's been an issue with the notification of a Butters, we cannot open the public hearing. I did begin an email with the applicant, and, Mr. Harris, I would ask you, with, I believe, no one present to represent this, can we defer to a future date?
Yes, you can.
What's that?
Yes, you can.
All right. Then, I would, I would recommend that we defer to our December 11th meeting, that gives enough time for notification to be sent to a Butters.
Do we need a motion?
I was going to say, I believe we would need a motion to that effect, and then we can vote on it, to defer the, this public hearing to, to our December 11th meeting at 6:05 PM.
So moved.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, very good. And I see we do have one member of the public in the in-person audience as well. Are you here for 171 Arbor Street or 255 Sunny Hill Road, one of those?
Arbor Street.
They, well, we'll be looking at that next, and they have requested a continuance. So, that we will be doing nothing more now than.
Request a continuance.
Yes.
Continuance to when?
November 27th.
For your edification? I believe they'll be meeting with Conservation on November 15th?
The 15th, Conservation will be meeting.
As well.
Yep. And both of those properties are in there.
Yes.
All right, well, thank you for coming, and.
Sorry for the inconvenience.
Sorry, yeah, very sorry for the inconvenience.
I have cookies.
There are cookies, if you like a cookie.
There are cookies, if you like one.
We should have put that in the pitch to get people down here in the beginning.
I could have stood outside.
Okay. So, they have requested a continuance, do we need to vote to accept that request? All right, I would accept a motion to accept for a continuance for a public hearing for 171 Arbor Street to November 27th at 6:05 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye for myself. All right, and next up on our public hearing agenda is 255 Sunny Hill Road. They have also requested a continuance, correct?
Yes, they have, yep.
Is that also to November 27th?
Yes, for the next date.
For those watching at home, this is the ever-going shuffle of trying to arrange meetings and things needing to happen before or after other decisions are made. All right, I would be looking, I would look for a motion, possibly to, for example, continue the hearing for 255 Sunny Hill Road to our November 27th meeting at 6:05 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Public hearings, now off our, now finished on the agenda with no public hearings. Perfect. Not perfect, kind of unfortunate, but that's, that's the way the cookie crumbles.
Hey, that's a good one.
All right, Board Discussions is next on our agenda, and that very long list of things is the warrant articles. And that is there in case we wanted to discuss the warrant articles. We have, again, we have no members of the public in the room, I do see one member of the public in Zoom. If you are here for our discussion of the warrant articles, I'm happy to accept public feedback as well, or discussion, so, again, use that raise hand feature, or let us know that that's what you'd like to talk, if you're here for that. Otherwise, I would just open up to the board for any further discussion. I'll say that our slides are in the deck for a special town meeting. I am presenting the three articles that we put together, and am I presenting the farm bylaw one? I'm fine with that.
If you like.
I don't have a preference one way or another, it's very straightforward, so.
Very good.
Okay.
As somebody who's been trouble, having trouble keeping track of time, when's the special town meeting?
Tomorrow.
Oh, tomorrow? Okay.
Yep.
That's fine.
7:00 PM, Middle High School.
Okay.
Yep, that is tomorrow, 7.
Right.
And again, for those at home, that is tomorrow, Tuesday, the 14th of November, at 7:00 PM at the auditorium at the Middle High School, and we hope you attend. You are part, by being a citizen of this town, you are a registered voter, you are part of the legislature of this town, and you show up and your voice counts as much as anyone else's.
You are the legislative body.
Yes.
Town meeting.
All right.
I have a question. Did we manage to arrange to have the full-size map of the Water District?
Yes, there will be, for the Water District article, there will be a full-size map available at registration, there will be handouts as well, because the way they, they printed it for the town warrant and the photocopying, as we know, got rid of some clarity, and the shrinking got rid of some clarity. So, there'll be appropriately sized handouts as well for people to have with them. In addition, there will be a printout of, a handout of the warrant article with the proposed amendments.
Okay.
To fix the Scribner error as well, Scribner errors, as well as taking care of the Zone 1 requests that were put forward by members of the public at our public hearing.
Did you send me the?
No, because, I did not yet, because I needed that, I started doing it, but I had it unformatted, so I'll be working on that tonight and send it to you. All right. Do we have any other questions, thoughts on the upcoming warrant articles? We've talked about it a bunch, but I wanted it there in case we needed to. Great. So, and the Board Discussion section.
Oh, actually, the.
Oh, 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 that is Board Discussion, that's right, thank you, no, I am a dirty liar. Ms. Aubrey, our fantastic planning department, or land use department, whatever we call it, administrative assistant, has also asked that we put into our discussion our application submission deadlines, as well as, as well as the, was it the application submission deadlines for subdivision rules and regulations?
The conversation that we had with Richard, it kind of coincided with each other, so I, I know there were a couple of points that were made that didn't particularly relate to the application deadlines, and so I wanted to include subdivision rule and regulations.
Well, why don't I hand the floor over to you to kind of break us into this discussion?
Sure.
And what you were thinking and needs and everything else.
So, I mean, due to kind of limited staffing right now, I think it might be useful by changing the, kind of, date of when the deadline submission is for applications, just to move it by an extra day or two to give it that buffer, might help the office in general, as well as giving time in between applications in order to kind of get everything and make sure that things are really done appropriately and thoroughly. And I, you know, I just, my main intent really is to kind of give that transparency to people and give the expectation of that when they submit an application, that it is going to be made sure that it's thoroughly checked over and that everything has been done, and I think an extra, so right now, the deadline is like a, other than a, you know, a stormwater permit or a special permit, which is 21 days, it would be like a Wednesday before a Monday meeting, I'm thinking to cut that deadline off to be a Monday before a Monday meeting, if that makes sense.
Okay, all right, and now, oh, Richard, please. You're unmuted.
I would just offer that, whether you have more staffing or not, I've always felt that a one week before meeting is a reasonable cut-off time for any submission, because that gives enough time to give information to the board, the staff go, go over it, as opposed to. to giving everything to people at last minute type situation. Also, if you make it available to the public, they have more time to look at it before the Monday planning board meeting. Because when you get something on Wednesday, it goes out on Thursday, you just have a weekend, and a lot of people have weekend plans.
And I have a question for Richard as well.
Yeah, please.
So, Richard, and so help me understand, so regardless, the date, the application is received by the planning office is the date of any time clock to begin, regardless of how we word this, correct?
Correct, yes.
So, this also has the potential to take time away from our clock on, on any given project that has a time clock. Like, we've got 135 days for the Arbor Street. We've got 45 days for certain other things. We've got 60 days for other, so, and I'm just, and I think this is a great idea. I think that the week, I agree with, with both, with both Annie and Richard, and I've always thought this, I, I, yes, I'm, I'm in favor of it. But I also want to mention that it's going to affect our time clock on the other end of any limited response.
One thing is, on your stormwater permit, there is a deadline for beginning hearings under your bylaw. Bylaw doesn't have any deadlines for completion of public hearing review. It's, so adding two days to Monday, it just really makes it easier to manage the review process and gives more time. We're going to tell myself, Monday before the meeting is going to be held. Things like a stormwater permit, things like site plan review, any of those plans really should be in a month or more before planning meeting. So, the Monday before is kind of like the last-minute type items. A and Rs for one. Does A and R have the tightest timeframe of all?
I, I was gonna say that, that, I, I think the take-home for us is if we were to embrace this, which I'm also in favor of, that means we, the trade-off there is we are going to have a little, potentially have a little less time. Now, A and Rs are 21 days, correct?
Yeah.
So I don't know that that even changes, actually, because?
You can't have two meetings, right?
Yeah. Like, regardless, that doesn't, you have two, if you were to do it, it would be one or two meetings, but if it was Wednesday, it would still be one or two meetings of availability. You're muted again.
I'm muted.
I keep muting myself. The, the tricky part is, sometimes there are three weeks between a meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Not always, but sometimes. The, the trick with A and Rs is that you have 20 days in which to act on it, and that means really to file your notice of action. So it doesn't really have a problem if you're approving it, or not approving, but if you endorse an A and R, but if you are denying endorsement, then you got more tricky situation. My experience has been, whenever I advise a applicant that the board is inclined to deny based upon your current situation, they almost inevitably will say, "Well, can we give them more time so I can give more information to the board so they can endorse it?" And that then extends the clock.
Great. All right.
The only problem with that, I don't remember Lunenburg ever denying to endorse an A and R.
It's very rare.
Right. And then the other comment, I, I don't want to cut?
I was gonna say, I, I think while I've been on the board, there have been incidences where we have identif, oh, maybe, I feel like there's been times we've identified flaws in A and R, and they have, in that discussion, chosen to pull rather than have us deny.
I, I don't disagree, but there were those, those things that we mentioned were not necessarily, I believe, options that we had to deny.
Oh, you know, you're right, you're right. And we've identified other issues.
And they've requested?
Yes, so they could fix. Fair.
In South Haddon, 22 years, I can only recall one A and R that the board voted not to endorse because of the roadway condition, and therefore lots not mean, and there can not mean the frontage. And so they denied it, and then the applicant came back with a request for them to reconsider it after town council advised them differently, and they end up endorsing second go-around anyway. But it's a very rare event to have, have a board deny endorsement of an A and R.
The other thing. Oh, oh, the other thing about only having two meetings to decide is, is every once in a while, there is weather, there is a holiday, there is a lack of quorum, so we may not actually be able to hold both meetings that it would encompass.
True, but what I realize, if we're on a Wednesday, like, so basically, we're talking about going back two days.
Yes.
That doesn't change the number of meetings we would have access, like, that two-day slush doesn't change the number of meetings that could occur regardless.
Exactly.
So, no, it's a fair point, but I think it's moot in this instance. All right, other?
We could always do, sorry.
Go.
I mean, we could do like Tuesday at noon?
No, I, I?
I like Monday.
I think?
Monday is good.
No, I, because Tuesday, for the tightest timeframe, which is the A and Rs, Monday and Tuesday are effectively the same day in terms of the amount of meetings we would have to process it and endorse or deny endorsement.
Right.
So might as well give you Monday. I, I hear favor from one member of the planning board and myself, and from Richard, our expert, but I turn to the other members of the planning board and see if there's any other questions or?
I'm fine with it.
See no reason not to do it. So what would the motion be here to change our, I believe, is policy?
I believe it, it would go, would it go under subdivision rules and regulations for Lunenburg, or not necessarily, since it's a department?
Yeah, it wouldn't, it wouldn't go under subdivision rules and regulations, it would just, there should be, the board should have general rules and regulations, and it would go as a general policy, that the application, the seminal deadline for any material must be at least seven days prior to the meeting at which it would first be considered.
Okay.
I'm perfectly comfortable with that.
And that's calendar dates, just to be clear.
Yeah. And do we, do we need a motion that cites where that goes specifically in our policies, or just?
No.
Okay.
I think just, you're adopting policy that the, all applications supplemental materials must be at least seven calendar days prior to the day, the date and time of the meeting.
All right. I believe that is enough that if someone liked it, they could say, "So moved."
So moved.
Second.
Very good. Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. And I, I will say, I, having been in the planning office a lot more recently, I absolutely see the advantage of this. The number of emails and calls I get that are, uh-oh, one more thing.
Yep.
Great. And Annie, that was what you, that was what you needed from that discussion, correct? Or is there more to it?
There was one other item. I don't necessarily think it will need a motion, because it would be something that I would want to be able to present to the board to kind of look over, but essentially, I'm not sure how we adopted the stormwater permit checklist that we utilize. I think it's been really useful, and I think I'd like to use that same kind of format for checklists for other applications and kind of make it more user-friendly and to people, especially who aren't our regular engineers that kind of know the drill, you know, people who are looking into things that they want to do and just kind of have a, a set, I'm trying to think of examples, of course, I can't think of any right now, of different things that they would need and not need versus on the, the type of special permit and everything. So I wanted to draft up a few example checklists to present towards the board, so that kind of was the stem of the conversation from changing the timeline to kind of making things in the office at least more transparent for people, that they can have something in their hands. That way, I'm not having individual conversations that break down the process for them, because I'm either sending the code of Lunenburg and the rules and regulations, which is essentially useful. I just kind of want to make things very clear and efficient for people, and see if there's a way to do that, and so I'm open for feedback on how we can maybe do that.
My God, town government trying to be helpful to?
No way.
I, I say that, but I want to be clear, for the members of the public watching this, this is a refrain I hear all the time within Lunenburg town government, is, "What can we do to make it more accessible?" So, watch, listen, I think you'll hear more and more of this from this and other groups over time. Is this something the board, we don't need a vote, but just kind of looking for feedback, is this something we'd be interested in Annie putting together for us to take a look at?
Yeah.
Yep.
I'd recommend you look at the site plan approval checklist. I think that that's the most detailed one that we have. And I don't think that it would take much at all to modify that to be applicable to the various special permit applications that need to be filled out.
Yeah.
Great.
Awesome.
All right, wonderful. Super. And that now, is that, I think that's everything?
It's everything.
Okay, wonderful, great. Thank you to the board for taking some time to make the office end of things work smoother.
Appreciate it.
It's been eye-opening, I'll say that. All right, we have minutes approval for our October 23rd meeting for 255 Sunny Hill Road and 270? Now, wait, that, are those all minutes that we have, or?
We don't have those.
Okay. Then we won't, so we don't have any of them, correct? We will not be doing minutes approval tonight.
I have a, I have a technical question for Richard.
Yes, please.
Richard, so I, I believe at least a couple of these were for public hearing minutes. Is it required that we add the fact that it was a public hearing in the label of the minutes?
In, there's, there should be, on that item, it should be labeled that there's a public hearing on that item, and then the, it should indicate that the public hearing minutes are attached.
Okay, so, so we should have, like, we've got 10, 23, 23 minutes, which is probably just the meeting minutes.
Yep.
But then we've got 255 Sunny Hill Road, and then so it should just say public hearing after that, right? Minutes, minutes of?
Right.
Okay. I just, I just wanted to be clear before I ask you again about that, the, that it is actually a requirement, I think.
Typically, boards will approve public hearing minutes separate from the meeting minutes. Not all of them do that, so I'm actually, actually embed the public hearing minutes into the body of the meeting minutes, which I think is a mistake to do. But yes, they, they're often done as a separate approval.
We generally do have the separate meeting, minutes for our public hearings, not part of the body of the minutes for the main meeting, and that, we do tend, often end up doing a single motion to approve them all.
You can do a single motion to approve them all, but I would reference them all as separate minutes.
And that is what we do, Paul, that is what we do. So, great.
And they are separated, they're just no indication that it was?
That they were public hearings on the agenda. Yep.
No, I think it's fine.
Great. All right. So we are on to committee reports. Stormwater Task Force, I'm going to put you last today because, that one last, because there's going to be probably some follow-up questions regardless of whatever the?
We haven't had a meeting. It's this Thursday.
All right. I will still be hitting you with some questions.
Fair enough.
Just so we know. Master Plan Steering Committee.
We had a pretty good turnout at Smokestack two weeks ago, two weeks ago. Got a lot of good input. I personally like the direction that Underover's plan has started to take. Their town model looks great. It's, it's plexiglass cover, needs a little bit of an adjustment, but, you know, that's just technical issues. Yeah, I think that's the bulk of it, really. People have started to get involved, and hopefully it continues and picks up from there.
Great. Thank you. Open Space Ad-Hoc Committee.
I don't believe we've met, and I'm not sure that I've seen an agenda posted for this month, so I'm going to say no report.
All right. Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee.
We had, excuse me, we had a very brief meeting for about half an hour.
If you'd like, you can take a moment, we'll go back. No worries. So we will go on to the, well, AGCOM will skip for a moment, too, that's less helpful. Capital Planning Committee. Whoo-ee, we are in full swing. We have heard, we have heard so far the presentations for the IT Capital Plan, the Fire Department Capital Plan, the Police Department Capital Plan, and the DPW Capital Plan. We have more upcoming, and again, as a reminder, we will, what we will not be doing is stopping with the new year, as is common, and then, as we've done previously, instead, the Capital Plan Committee will then, after the new year, take some time to look at the 10-year needs of the town and try to address a capital plan. So it is not the, so it is in fact the Capital Planning Committee rather than the Capital Project Ranking Committee. To that end, a, something that came up at the last meeting, I am looking through my notes, may have been a different note set. All right. Oh, yes, I, this way over there. There was a discussion at the Capital Plan meeting where we basically looked at the fact that between now and the next forever, we're kind of looking at at least $500,000 a year minimum in stormwater mitigation needs for the town. And it came up from other members of the Capital Plan of, they kind of want to know, what are we doing about stormwater? And I explained to them that in Lunenburg, we have, we don't, we aren't doing the minimum. Our stormwater plans are more aggressive than some municipalities. There are some that are even more aggressive than ours. But that we, that we've done that, as well as we do have, I want to double-check, we have been putting in that, those reporting and recording to ensure that for, for the upkeep of stormwater that's been installed. Is that correct? They have to have the, they have to put in their maintenance book, and wasn't there a component about, didn't, I'm looking, maybe we didn't, but I swear we have a component now about maintenance having to be recorded somehow when they do their annual maintenance on installed stormwater things? Am I totally off base on that?
I think it is being tracked. I haven't been on stormwater in a while, but I, I do believe they were tracking it.
Yeah, with, with the new projects. We, we can't go back, but we've had those, so those were all discussions that were had. And there was interest from members of the Capital Planning Committee, representing various committees within town, including Select Board and Finance, about the notion of, should there be a, should Lunenburg be looking at a comprehensive stormwater management plan? at a comprehensive stormwater management plan? Not just-- not just stormwater bylaw like we have now to address new construction, but should-- and this would be looking at funding, looking-- and then it came up, well, wasn't the Stormwater Task Force looking at the idea of a stormwater utility? And so that's why I'm going to put stormwater last, because we'll have more discussion there. But I just kind of want that-- there was a recognition that stormwater is an ongoing issue, and as we've talked about here on this Board, is only going to get worse. And I think we are seeing interest from other parts of town government in looking forward collectively at comprehensive stormwater management for the town and a plan to go forward. That wouldn't necessarily really fall under the master plan, but is something-- So I guess I would just turn to the Board and ask, is that something in the broad sense that we would be interested in working with other groups in town on looking at going forward?
I think that's definitely a component of what we need to do as a town to address stormwater. I think there are definitely some other things, but a unified town-wide front could only be a good thing, as far as I see it.
You look pensive, Mr. Allison.
Yeah. So I was on the Stormwater Committee Task Force for the first four years of its life. My understanding of that formation of that group was to review, discuss, discover, and present a form of funding for the MS4 permit. And the-- the-- all the things that I thought I heard you describe were things that have come out of the CEI contract that Stormwater Task Force had, and basically was helping DPW with the MS4 permit on an annual basis. They've identified, they've mapped the sewer system. We don't have a sewer system per se. We have a bunch of daisy chain catch basins to catch basins to manholes to wetlands, to outlet structures, and that's it. We don't have-- we don't have a stormwater sewer-- the MS4 basically is municipal storm sewer system. There's another S in there, I forget. We've done a really good job of mapping our collections and our outfalls. I don't think we've connected the dots on the GIS. Some of the dots have not been identified, both ends, some of the pipes. There's just a lot of unknowns. It's a really old system. But the fact remains that there are going to be more and more and more excessive expenditures required by different parts of the town to facilitate remediation of this increased stormwater. And people seem to be unclear of where it comes from. It comes from development. When you take area that was field and woods and you pave over it and put houses on it, you're going to increase your stormwater. It's not rocket science. It's very simple. The more developed your town gets, the more stormwater you're going to have a problem with. It's very simple.
That was-- what my additional things in terms of, like, what do we do for this? Is there something that we can do to change, like, what our stormwater require-- stormwater requirements are? Instead of it being a, we know, you know, this is planned to be, you know, the development that we do is offset by what we do. What can we do to push that in the other direction to be like, fine, you're going to develop this space. If you are, you need to be able to retain twice as much water as it is predicted based upon standard models today is going to happen. Because we know those standard models aren't representing what we're doing. Essentially, is there something we can do to change our development stormwater requirements?
So part of the answer to that would be, before you joined the Board, we did put forward the current stormwater bylaw that is more aggressive, that likes more aggressive than state requires in some areas.
We amended it.
Uh, we amend, okay.
It started in 2008.
Fair. And it wasn't a full rewrite.
It was never enforced until 215, when Adam got here.
Mm-hmm. So-- Yes, I mean, we have the ability to put-- to amend bylaws and put that forward to town meeting for whatever changes we deal-- we find appropriate. I think there's always the issue of selling more stringent requirements to the town.
Sure.
And that might be one of the reasons that it could be good to have us looking at a comprehensive--
Sure.
Looking at comprehensively with other Boards, because they may have other thoughts on what to do, and we may-- frankly, just more buy-in can only result in a better end product and something that's more likely to be accepted by the town's legislature, the people. So yes, we can do that. We did it fairly recently, past few years. And there's also an issue of, we can't change what's been done.
Sure.
All right.
I think you were saying that zoning can't be retroactive?
Yes.
I think that's--
Yeah. But the-- but I know that what was coming from the Capital Planning Committee is not just, let's look at our stormwater bylaw and see if it needs shoring up. It is more comprehensive, looking at-- because there's still going to be a monetary need--
Sure.
--for addressing existing issues and issues that are going to come up. And so why-- but what I'm hearing from the Board is, we are interested in working with other Boards in town to figure this out. So I'll bring that back to capital planning, and I think that will filter through and take a little bit of time, but I think that's a good step in the right direction, in my opinion. Economic Development Committee did not meet because the-- there was an agenda posting issue. Next meeting is-- I'd have to look and see. I don't know off the top of my head. Monticuzet Regional Planning Commission.
Uh, we met on the 9th, and mostly we were talking about the digital equity planning that MRPC is doing, which is basically how to get internet access and digital media to everyone in a town. I don't think Lunenburg is doing this. I believe they sent information to maybe the Select Board, maybe the Planning Office. I'm not quite sure who gets the emails from them. That's really pretty much it. If you want more information on the digital equity planning that they're doing, you can go to MRPC.org, and it'll tell you everything you want to know.
Great, thank you. Monticuzet Joint Transportation Committee.
That is me. We met on the 8th. I'm just reading my notes. Mostly, we talked about the Regional Comprehension Safety Action Plan, which is the Safe Streets for Everyone, which we've talked about before. Grant money comes in, and then you can make your streets a little safer by changing your road signs, or adding crosswalks or getting crosswalks redone to make them safer. Again, not sure if Lunenburg is involved in that as well, but all the information I'm sure goes to somebody somewhere in Lunenburg.
I know we have people who are interested in looking at improving road crossing in our downtown district, in our town center district. Because available parking is across the street from the things you might-- is often across the street from the things you might want to park for.
Yes.
Is that-- is that-- he says grant issue. Grant, yes?
I believe they-- yeah, I believe MRPC is able to get grant money to assist towns. I believe that's how that works.
Okay. I will--
I'm just not sure who deals with MRPC directly.
Uh, we can get that info. That is good to know. I can pass this on to Kathy on the Economic Development Committee, who has been one who's expressed interest in this. And knowing that's a passion of hers, she may have the drive to push some of that.
If I'm-- that's federal grant, I believe.
I believe.
I do know, I know different state that I worked in, but we had gone for that grant just last year for a police department, had applied for that safety grant. So I don't know if that helps.
Yeah. Not quite sure.
But anyways.
Great reading experience always helps, I think.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
All right. Excellent. Okay. And now we will loop back to Stormwater Task Force. Mr. Wilson, you said that haven't met.
Haven't met. Thursday will be the second meeting I have been to for Stormwater Task Force, or the second meeting since I started.
So do you know anything about the Stormwater Task Force looking towards developing a stormwater utility or anything else?
No.
If you would not mind bringing to the Task Force, there's some of the discussions we've had tonight, and kind of interest is brewing within the town for comprehensive--
Yeah.
--stormwater management, as well as concerns about funding for stormwater issues. Because when the town is dealing with stormwater, it's a lot-- it's not residential levels of water. It's fundamentally different, and we're looking at projects that are tens of thousands of dollars to even figure out how to address, and then hundreds of thousands to address. Thank you, sir.
So to follow on to that, in my tenure as Stormwater, I-- we did have one presentation from-- I don't remember what the person's title was, but he introduced us to-- well, he gave us a presentation on his experiences with his town developing the stormwater utility. And I believe if I look through my stuff, I probably can find some of that data, and at least the name. And I believe that there was an online thing, so I hopefully can find that and pass that on.
Thank you, sir. All right, Director's Item. Nothing. We have no Director. We have no direction.
We have an interim.
Uh, he is not an interim Director. He is--
Oh, that's right.
Yes.
Sorry.
Which, again, for people watching at home, is a-- for anyone in the public, that is a minimal to nonexistent difference for the way you would interact with things. But in terms of how hiring is done, in terms of what he is and isn't handling on the back end, different role of responsibilities. All right. But I would take that moment to say, if you are a certified urban planner who would like to work in the town of Lunenburg, I've got good news for you. I would send your resume over to Town Hall. Love to hear from you. All right, meeting schedule. All meetings are at 6:00 PM and held at Town Hall unless-- well, all Planning Board meetings. 6:00 PM at Town Hall unless otherwise indicated. Upcoming meetings include November 27th and December 11th. Ongoing Items. Master Plan. I can give a little more there. Tim talked about the success of the-- of the info gathering session and presentation with Over/Under RKG, and I feel awful because the third firm escapes me, but--
It was-- yeah. It was the only one--
In Associates. I have to double-check. I apologize. But again, just for clarification of those watching, we often talk about over/under. In reality, the contractors we've hired to help us in this process is not one group. It is three separate groups who have banded together with their unique sets of expertise. And really, they're the ones who put forward a compelling case, especially for getting information from the public, which is super important. I have been discussing, I've been in my regularly twice monthly meetings with Over/Under. Josie, as Chair of the Steering Committee, has also been attending those. We have been looking at additional venues to get people out and soliciting feedback from the town and getting them to take the surveys. And also as a note for those at home, if you've taken a survey, there are more, especially if you took it a while ago. And that is because what they're doing is, they send out a survey, gather data. Once they have that data, that helps about what people in Lunenburg are looking for from the town. They then can narrow it. And so there's a second survey out now at planlunenburg.org, and you can take it there. And it takes data from the first survey, input from the first survey, and will ask you about agreement or disagreement with some things that were-- that came out of that survey. The idea being that each time, they're narrowing down the expectation, the understanding, to get more dialed in to the wishes of the town. So we're looking at other avenues. We've done some brainstorming and realized some ideas weren't going to work, and we may be trying to get representatives from Over/Under and/or volunteers from the committee, and/or student volunteers who need community service hours or simply want to help their community, to be out in front of local retail establishments, trying to, again, get the word about the master plan out.
I also have paper copies in my office, and they have paper copies of the additional survey in Town Hall as well.
So if going to planlunenburg.org is not your jam, good news. We have analog as well. I will say that if it's equally easy to do digital, it is a little easier on the back end because there's no entry of data. But we'd rather, if on paper is the only way you're going to do it, we'd rather you did it on paper than didn't fill it out at all. There will be more info gathering sessions and getting word out sessions in the coming months. Stay tuned.
Question. Do we know if there are some of the paper copies at the Eagle House?
That is a good question. I'm not sure.
Or in Town Hall?
I could-- Town Hall there are.
Okay. But the Eagle House, I think it'd be a good place for them as well.
Hmm, that's a good point.
I can double-check.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And there may be a maximum number of paper copies that Over/Under feels they can handle. So I don't know if we're printing them or they've provided them. If they've provided them, don't even worry about it. If we were printing them, then I will-- I can loop back with Rami and just--
Okay. I haven't printed any.
Cool, then we're fine. And then I wouldn't worry. But I just want to make sure. I don't even know if we have the files to print it, frankly. And that might be intentional, so we're not--
Copy, print.
Yep. All right. Aqua for Protection District, that's-- that can probably come off ongoing items after this, because that is the warrant article. Zoning, the MBTA Communities. There is a general Q&amp;A session, a virtual, that I plan on attending tomorrow as Cap-- as the special town meeting session is winding down. I'm our primary contact, the town's contact for that. I'll be looping in with our representative in MRPC, whose name escapes me off the top of my head, I have in my notes, to basically get more info on where we are with that and if, what if anything needs to be happening. Lunenburg Municipal Buildings. I don't think we have anything new there. If we do, tell me. Town Environmental Support is on the back burner. Pondview Commons, I'm aware of no updates. Has any updates come through the Planning Office? Great. All right. So that ends ongoing items. We turn to the public and ask for public comment. Seeing no public in the room, assume there's no public. Is there anyone in the waiting room?
Nope.
Great, then. There is no public. Well, there is, just not here. Board Comments Concerns. I do want to take a moment to say that there's a lot of people pulling extra-- Um, I do wanna take a moment to say that there's a lot of people pulling extra in the absence of a land use director for this board to be able to function, and it's not just board members, and it's not just Annie, um, Brian, our town building commissioner's helping, Heather, our town manager's helping, there are, many hands are pulling to help keep us on track and moving forward. And so we are very fortunate to be in the position that people are leaning in, and that the feedback isn't, I can't believe, uh, you know, the feedback isn't, ah, really, it's, we have a job to do. It's just nice. All right. Any other board comments or concerns? In that case, I'd be looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone, meeting adjourned at 7:11 PM.